We're gonna get wrong. All right, we'll call it five oh one, we'll call this special meeting to order with a quick roll call.
Sue Erickson.
Here.
Ken May is absent, Joel Newman.
Here.
Sean Burtzall is absent, Craig Conley.
Citizens Forum. Or council if you've had anything, I guess, this would this be the point is most appropriate? How, since there's a window right here, how is it going with Danielle?
Something's good, something's a little slow.
Yeah, okay.
Moving a little slow.
Is that you think just capacity to sit and train or?
There's a little bit of the capacity to be able to sit and train, just because I feel like I'm still just putting out fires. Um, and and other things, it's just. Multi her getting into multitasking.
Yeah, learning the city stuff. Okay.
Taught her a new word the other day, which was quorum, so that.
Yeah. Yeah, there's lots more.
Lot, lot unknown, so a lot to lot to start from ground zero.
Anything we can support that?
What's that?
Any council can do to put that?
Um, I think she could attend a couple of meetings and. Encourage her to attend a couple of meetings. It's hard tonight. She works till seven at the library, so it's 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 a, yeah.
Yeah, I think if we plant, I think we should plant the seed about the next one now if we can, because maybe they can make an arrangement of some sort. Um, and we could talk to Jen about that too, but I agree, it'd be good for her to see some meetings. Maybe take her own notes and start practicing about comparing.
Yeah.
Because I I don't know, she can kind of take minutes or figure that out some with your adjustment. Whatever we can do to take more of that on. Um, and we can circle back about that as well. I want to just catch you two before the week's up, just to go on the same page, because I'm gonna be gone for two weeks. So we'll just jump in, talk for a couple of minutes. The, the, um. Fence deal, you were at Park and Rec on a week ago Monday, the.
Oh, yeah.
Did, is that ordered?
It's not ordered, but yeah, Park and Rec went ahead and approved.
Everything, so we just.
So, yeah, it'll get ordered.
Okay, so is that your, you got to order it, or Danielle's got to order it, or our office does?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They did fifteen hundred.
Yeah, that's for the dump lot. To start, that's for the dump lot. We have quorum, I mean.
That's the, you can turn around the league.
Um, okay, great, yeah, I I think in my mind, I think there's still usable time to have something like that up if we were to get it. Because I don't know when you take something like that down is, you know, before snow, but like October or.
Probably, yeah, I would say.
Couple of months out of it, maybe, if we got it ordered. That's a task you could delegate to her. And then the only other thing I had was, I can't remember the guy's name off the top of my head, but he emailed us again.
Tony.
Tony.
Yes, it's definitely on my to do list. It's just I've been putting out some fires these last couple of weeks with a grant due and.
Okay.
Council.
Grant, that's good, what are we?
Um, the REIT grant, the first phase, the first round of the REIT grant, seventy-five thousand dollars is what we're eligible for for the sports.
That's who died with the NR.
Yeah.
Whatever, okay, cool. Good to know, I didn't know we were applying for that.
Yeah, county has to approve it and their and their approval was last Thursday, yeah.
I got an email about it, they're not very good about giving us heads up.
That's the packet we received in the mail.
He, I got one in the mail like. Yeah. I got another one, uh, well, the other packet we got in the mail is the grant we've already applied for, and it had a copy of every single grant application for a county.
Oh, yes, because that'll be a public hearing.
That's a public hearing as well, so we did get that one. I got information, I, it was actually an email I got about the REIT grant.
Oh, okay.
If you got something in the mail, it's for the hundred and sixty-nine thousand we requested.
Right, that's from the county.
And they didn't even get enough requests to use the money, the the bucket they have.
Oh, really?
So if we don't get it, it'll be like.
Why?
Yeah, right.
Yep.
Okay, so on top of a hundred and seventy, there's another.
Seventy-five. The REIT is very, very competitive, though, they get twice as, like, for small cities, I think they have. Um, I think they only have like six hundred thousand available. And small cities only get seventy-five each, so.
And it's kind of meticulous, and it's Story County Conservation, right?
Yeah, they officially approve it, and then it goes to the state for final approval. They are, the REIT portion of it is very much about environmental benefits to your land that you're doing. Yeah, their bioswales, is there a buffer zone so that, you know, there's, you know. A buffer zone for water drainage into Four Mile Creek, that kind of stuff. Are you creating a butterfly garden?
Yeah.
So. Much more about the environment.
That's good, and then on the the Tony thing of that, it sounds to me like. There's probably a contractor that owes us a lot of that paperwork somewhere, it's just probably determining who that is, I don't necessarily, you know, I. I don't, if somebody did a project for us and owes us paperwork, I would think you should feel totally comfortable pushing that back on them.
Yeah.
Because he made it sound like this is usually, I'm usually getting these documents from contractors.
See, and I thought everything was submitted, and then they were like, you don't have everything submitted, so.
Yeah, and if you, he was gracious and good to me, if you just want to call him too and pin him down on it.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we get it taken care of, obviously.
The list of items still needed, so.
Okay.
Yeah, um, on that topic, I guess I don't understand all of this, but. It seems like we're way in a rear so.
On that particular project, yeah.
It seems like we need to move this one. I know you say you got a lot of priority right now, but. Without me knowing, understanding what this Iowa Foundation that is.
Iowa Finance Authority.
Yeah. It seems like this one needs to be at the top of the priority list, so.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Is our credibility online here, I guess, what I'm worried about. Because I assume this is something we will go to again, then if they say, well, the last time you. Didn't do your job.
Yeah, I don't think they can, I don't think they can technically deny us, but what he said he could do is we could not proceed on anything in the works until this is cleaned up.
Reports are done.
So, we just need to clean it up. The sooner the better. And then I think just kind of in closing with that, I I know you got a lot going on, it seems like there's some emails sometimes that go. Without a response to that, and I don't care if you necessarily have the answer, but I think there's scenarios when it's just be nice to know that the email was received. And I know that, you know, like this Tony one, I don't know, maybe you responded directly to him. For that, but it's like some of those things I feel like hang out there sometimes, or we're copied on, and it's like. I don't know if it's been responded to, or if it hasn't, or even if it's not finished, at least just the responsiveness of it. Um, to let us know, or let me know, or if others reach out, hey, I I've got it, I'm I'm working on it or whatever, that would be appreciated. Because that does seem like a little breakdown, you know?
Yeah, and if you're overwhelmed with, like, if your inbox is so full from. What are we, eight months of vacancy? I'd be glad to come in and just like sort through your inbox, put it in folders.
Personally, a hundred a day.
I know, so, but I I I do agree, we've had several instances where people have said. And never heard anything back. Um, so if you're overwhelmed, and it would be good to just have somebody come and help you just sort through all that. And I would be glad to come in and help, because I know you, sometimes you just feel like you got buried and you can't dig your way out, so. Um, I would like this to be more timely and responsive. Um, hello, so if there's something we could do. If there's some kind of help we could provide, that would be great.
Well, hopefully Danielle can. But on that too, eventually.
Yeah, I think it's a hard, I think, I think you're, if. There's a chicken and an egg situation a little bit, where it's like, you're gonna have to put some of your stuff on pause to probably just get her trained on some other stuff, and that's gonna be a sacrifice to some, which I think we know and expect. But unfortunately, like, I I was down at the city while you were gone, and it's like Cory's in there testing the water, and I'm kind of like, oh, Cory's testing the water, and it's like Zach's helping him, and it's like. Oh, you know, I, you have more people, so you have a little bit more flexibility to do that, but.
For sure.
If there's certain things we need to put a pause on or slow down on, I would welcome those discussions, if that means you can get Danielle up to speed a little bit more. Um.
We just go through things as they come through the door.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's the easiest. It's just like, okay, you should be in charge of this, so here, let's go through it, you could put it in the computer or send the email or whatever.
Yeah. Do you feel like we need some, are we short still, do you feel like? I mean, we obviously didn't hire somebody with a lot of city experience, but regardless of how much experience we get to support, we're probably gonna be a little. Just the specific city Slater's based stuff and processes. I mean, from a staffing standpoint, do you feel like, hey, we we actually probably do need more help? Or. We're good, it's a time thing, or, you know, how are we gonna, how are we ever gonna get to the point where we're caught up when this? Do you have thoughts on that, or?
Um, yeah, I, I think we can move forward on a, on a third person. This point. She doesn't have the skills I thought she had with. Facebook with. With creating flyers and stuff, Canva and stuff, but.
Yeah. That's, that's somewhat surprising to me, because it does feel like, I feel like our Facebook has been pretty active with things, I don't know the time that's going into that, but. I feel like our, what I'm seeing from Facebook seems to be more than we've been doing for a long time, it's just.
Taken longer than you thought it would.
Yeah. Spending four to six hours on one flyers, probably a little too long.
Yeah.
I'm looking.
Multitasking's not, doesn't seem to be. Over. I mean, a lot of things goes, a lot of stuff goes through this office, so we get in after, you know, lots and lots of time, so. It's, it's a hard, it's a hard balance, and I get that. That's why the other person left.
I don't think each flyer works for six hours.
Yeah, wait, are we on print flyers or a, a Facebook post takes four to six hours?
No, creating a flyer, creating a, a, a print flyer, we do both, we'll print it and post it on Facebook. So.
So everything I'm seeing on Facebook, we were doing a print copy of as well?
Uh, a lot.
So where would I see that? Like, I see one on the door.
Here at Larry's at the post op, or at the post office.
So is that, when you say that number of time, is that running or printing them, running around delivering them, putting them up, things like that, all inclusive, or that's just at the computer four hours?
No, I think all inclusive, probably.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if some of that needs to be deprioritized, I think that would be, in my mind, what gets deprioritized so that other things are getting done. Or skills are being developed. So, but the last thing I would want to do is to go hire a third position that's supplementing. For, you know, that amount of time being spent on those type of tasks.
Yeah.
I think if there's a discussion of a third person, like, we better maybe look real holistically, it's like, what are we? What are the roles gonna be of that person, and how do we get them to that speed faster? You know?
Yeah.
Or is it a higher, higher level position that's coming from, you know, is it another city clerk coming from somewhere? So, okay.
So how do we move forward? I guess that's my concern, just.
Yeah, our, our groups.
We, you talked about leading services, I mentioned, we need a receptionist so that you guys can focus on the job. Um.
See, and that doesn't work here, you can't, I I don't see how a receptionist would be helpful.
It's hard for you to let things go, is there things that we can let go to a, the part timer that could cover some of the just. Like, a better term, the scupper components, how do we move forward, get caught up?
Just going through training, you know, some of the things we, some of the things we see and come through is once a day. Some are once a week, some are once a month, so it's just repetitive. A lot of it's repetitive and not having to ask the questions again the next time we do it. It's just gonna, it's just gonna take some time.
So nothing.
Nothing I can think of right now.
Yeah. All right, that's. We gotta get caught up or we can move forward, and that's obviously a major.
Me too.
Good. I don't know the intricacies well enough, that's why I'm looking at you, dude, what can we do?
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, it, if you think on it, because I do agree that it's. We want to move forward, and we're gonna have a lot of ball, we do have a lot of balls in the air right now with. Projects.
Yeah.
And planning and things like that, we need to accomplish. Let alone just keeping the, the books in order and everything else in order.
Getting this meeting set up so that we can do closing tomorrow on the property, yeah.
Yeah.
And you turn over the market, the, the gather.
I haven't really been a part of the market at all this season.
But gathers coming up.
Yeah, I haven't really volunteered for any of that either, the group, groups mostly doing that.
But not that you're not volunteering, but can Danielle step into some of those, because gather, there is a library and city function. So I'm just, I'm looking at some of those things, I know you said during the interview process, it's hard to let go of things, there's certain things that. She may do it differently, you did, but you still just say.
Yeah, just because they're different doesn't mean strong.
She may have some stumbles along the way, but if we give her less than critical, we're gonna get written up by the state for a mistake.
Yeah.
Then she can grab them. Open up time, yeah. So I guess that's what I'm looking at, is there some of those things that you, she stumbled a bit?
Yeah, I think whatever we can do, that, you know, even if it's a stretch and we need to try. I'm open to that, mm. And I think knowing you have Craig and Sue have both offered and, and willing to come in and do that, it's about five years. As hard as it is, I think you're gonna, we're gonna have to get to a point where something breaks, and you're willing to give some stuff up or bring them in for help.
Like, yeah.
Or we're never gonna get there.
No, like I said, every time something comes in that I think she's to be responsible for, we go through it, just, yeah, here, you do it, you send the email, you.
Yeah. So it's like, even like on this, this like, um, cover on the fence deal. Like, so we have the contact teed up, we have the quote teed up. Like, I'm sitting from the outside and just tell me your school, I'm sitting from the outside thinking like, hey Danielle, here's the guy, call the guy, get an invoice, give him a credit card, whatever. Just do this. That hasn't happened yet, is that just because you're not sure and you're nervous about that functionality or just?
Of her doing that? No, no, not at all.
Yeah. So I, I think there might be, maybe there's some of it, it's like. Needs to be told a little bit too, probably. And maybe a flyer gets drug out to four hours, because it's like, well, I don't have anything else that I know I have to do right now. And so. How do we keep pushing more in front?
Yep.
Let's, uh, transition to this resolution number one quick. Uh. The purchase of property three twenty-one Main Street, three nineteen. I know the preparation documents here, I know approval has been given to, to get to this point. I think this is just, I think Jen felt comf- most comfortable with getting this officially passed here in the.
I don't think it's ever been voted on, I know we discussed it in a, in a closed session at one point in time, but it was never voted to actually move forward on the purchase, so. Wanted to get it out there, get it in minutes that it's done approval in a resolution format, so that it's documented.
Just for clarity, probably my. That's HG Trust.
Um, that's the name of the, uh, attorney's office.
Oh, okay.
That's helping us with all the clothing documents.
Okay.
Our attorney kicked us to them.
Yeah.
Okay. Which is fine.
Which personally, I would like to revisit who's our attorney and why.
These were great, yeah, well, and these guys were great for this.
They got this done well, but I.
Really, yeah.
Our attorney basically goes, I don't have time to help you.
Because they were moving offices.
You know, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind maybe taking a revisit at who's our attorney.
Because we don't really use it very often.
Yeah. But I think as an important professional partner, I'd like to revisit that, I didn't like that we got pushed down the ladder here, but it worked out. But I do think it delayed the project, um, the closing of the project because of that.
Yeah, and the, the common not to exceed seventy grand from the economic development. I'm, I'm looking at the.
So I have a closing statement, I have a closing statement that actually says fifty-eight thousand, eight dollars and sixty-three cents is what we'll write the check for.
Okay.
Um. After we, uh, assign some valuations to each property, that might change just a little bit. Because. The, the taxes that might be due on each property depending on its valuation and timing. So I just, so there may be some closing costs that need to be revisited, I don't think it'll be more than sixty thousand, but I didn't want to be. I didn't want to be off by ten dollars and not have it been approved.
No, I just wanted, I didn't understand.
Yeah.
That line on the, I'm on the.
Yeah.
I was asking a question about.
Once we close, what's the, what's the plan?
So. Yeah, so I think Mark can speak that a little bit, but I'll just take, take back holistically. You know, the objective from the city's perspective is we summarize this conversation, is like, save, save the West Wall. Objective number one. Make it safe if there's other items that arise is number two. Then, what we've talked about in economic development is we would take the building. And we would do a reverse pro- a proposal process where we would try to advertise and market and, and. Use some media sources, put some press releases out with some folks and, and they've offered to help draft and write some of that for us, to take some of the workload on it. Um, and I've kind of said, hey, you, if you can help us run point on the marketing and getting a bunch of proposals in, that'd be great. So then we do something like that, and then what the council would, will need to discuss and consider is. Um, how do we wanna, what are we offering in this, right? Because we're offering an affordable building, but maybe we want to offer it. Affordable with the financing of it as economic development and create a little bit of, um. You know, in Jefferson, they talk about they make money on these projects, a little bit of money, and then they parlay it into the next one. So maybe set it up that way, but offering financing terms that are better than the market, so that, that it makes sense for them, because they're gonna have an expensive build out. We would, uh, the plan was to apply for the emergency catalyst grant. I found out from, uh, Iowa, the Iowa Economic Development has put the emergency catalyst on hold. Due to the flooding in Northwest Iowa. Makes sense. So I, um, they aims, Greg brought me a contingency, and his contingency plan is this, I didn't know this, but we're members of NIPA. NIPA is, you know, like mid Midwest Iowa planning, something.
Mid Iowa.
Mid Iowa planning, okay, so what they do is they basically, that's what they grant, they write grants for you, they know grants, they find grants, they're like, we're a member of it. So it's a service we could use in addition to trying to do them, um, ourselves. T-Mobile has a fifty thousand dollar grant through them right now that could work for a project like this. So, uh, Greg asked if I would be fine with us applying for that grant for fifty thousand, and I said, yep, just. Communicate with Jen and copy me on anything you need, get, get a grant written for that, if we can get that fifty. And then the second portion to try to make up the other fifty that we were wanting, and then we're seeing, there's leftover ARPA money. That has not been earmarked at the moment. And it could be as much as a hundred and thirty K. He would like to go to the supervisors and say, we have a project ready to go. Because the money has to be spent by the end of tw- this fiscal year, so July, by the end of July, we have a project that. Can be done.
That, yeah.
We can spend it, maybe even before the end of this calendar year. He would like to take a proposal to them for the rest of the ARPA money for this project in Slater.
That's twenty-four fiscal year, twenty-five?
Twenty-five, we're in five right now. Yes, it's the year twenty twenty-five, the end.
So, on the, on the building part of it, I met with Jason a week and a half ago. He's one that did gross one.
Yep.
And what he is in the works of right now is gonna write a scope that we could, and then he'll have a bid on that. And that's basically as a block wall, probably, or, you know, he'll have a scope written out that we could take that then. And give to. Any other. Yeah, yeah, but at least it's a scope, and, and everybody would then be bidding.
The same.
So I'm hoping to have that by, what would it be, August meeting? And we didn't, basically, you can say, yeah, that looks good, or, no, we don't like this scope, or yes, we like this scope, that's.
You said block, is it gonna be brick?
So what he's thinking, well, his, his idea would be to block it, because that's gonna be the safest.
Yeah.
And then, if we want, that would get the building safe, you would have a safe wall, and then you could do whatever facade.
Ordinance says bricks, so.
Right. Well, that's fine, it's just, that would get it to a safe building.
Yeah.
Well, you could do a brick facade on them.
Right.
Brick homes are a brick facade.
Right, right.
Yeah, but then at least you would, you would have a slate there, you're gonna sell it, maybe somebody wants something different. I think what his other question is, you know, and that, that's, do you want to put a doorway somewhere on the west side? Or at least put a lintel in that, oh, hey. You want a patio out on the west? You know, here's a lintel, alls you gotta do is knock the block out, or, that's, that's discussion that we'll have to have at some point. I don't think that needs to be, that's somewhat fairly easy to change. When, when they're doing something, but it's gonna be a, it'll be a broad up topic, topic at some point.
And some of this is flirting around the legal requirements to. Let the project and actually gather bids versus the quoting stage, because in vertical construction, it's a hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Nineteen? Two, two nineteen?
No, I thought, I thought it was a hundred and ninety-six. It's on your cheat sheet, right? I just remember that day, it's like. And the initial estimates, rough estimates, were in that ballpark. So the question is, are we?
Well, he was over two.
He was over two hundred, and the question is.
He was like two fifteen.
And it's like, are we close enough that this isn't, we're full? Letting and we're asking for these quotes, and so I think the theory was to get to the scope.
Because, yeah.
See what that is.
Yep.
Get some ideas to try to avoid.
The day I met with him, it was like, well, the city could go in and rip sidewalk out, that's nothing, and maybe we want to do that now. And the more we thought about it, it's like, no, that sidewalk's sloped, it's keeping some water away from it, helping, whatever. So no, we don't want to do that, let's wait until something gets done. So.
So we restore that wall.
Yep.
So, and we tried to, the timeline that I, we have talked about economic devol- development, and what I'd like to continue to push for is, before the end of the year, we have an identified user.
Okay, do you have prospects of that?
We have lots of people that have reached out and asked about the building.
I just had one listen.
Okay, but we've kind of, we'd really like to culminate all the proposals in one.
Right.
Including some financial requirements.
Absolutely.
And we'd like to really pick somebody in a perfect world that felt that they were committed to the area, but also financially stable enough to handle the project.
Absolutely.
So.
We keep trying to do this, right?
Eventually, we'll. People. Mark backing up a little bit.
Since we're pushing the threshold of the, the vertical, how do we deal with contingency? You've got all construction.
It's one of them that, you, you, you have to be honest, and if, if something comes up that you really don't know, I think you just. It, it happens, you know?
With that in the bid or something, or just something we deal with afterwards?
Be like a chain order at that point?
Yeah, it'd be a chain order.
Right, I didn't know with all the handholds that you guys got put on you.
And really, the only, yeah, I think if the scope means a lot of. And really, as long as you have. I mean, we built our shop with. Got, we had bids on a shop, you know, we never went out, it wasn't engineered, it was, it's an engineered building, but not by far.
And that's another difference between that threshold. You know, is engineering over that threshold, no engineering below that threshold.
Yeah.
We have an engineering report, so I think. Yeah, Jason feels good about it, about proceeding with what the initial engineering was, and not us not having to engineer it ourselves.
Okay.
So I think my push was like. Figure, go back. And figure out how to stay below the bid threshold, so that we don't have to.
All right, I just didn't know how to.
And, and I think you can do that, and then, okay, you put it on, you put it on the market for six months, you don't get anything, then, then you're gonna go to phase. Two, or, you know, whatever, and that's maybe the front, or whatever. Whatever you're gonna have to say.
Is it, would it be safe for people to walk around in there?
Yeah, it's safe to be in there, you can go through it.
What if we had it open, I assume there's gonna be a tailgate? What if it's open? That there's gonna be an RFP for this building.
So we started the public, if you haven't seen the website, and if you scan the cue cards, it becomes, we've advertised that's. And part of the plan with economic development was, we would identify some dates when prospective interested people could come see it. Um, and I think we wanted it, I, I think. You wanted to kind of keep it scaled towards people who are actually interested in RFP, it's not everybody in their neighborhood and from the area that just wants to walk through it. Because I do think, Sue, while it's, it's safe to walk in, there's pieces of plywood over some spots where there's holes, and there's. It wouldn't be a good idea for us in a tailgate to have. It wouldn't be a good idea for us in a tailgate to have general public walking through it.
Two hundred people in it, yeah.
It will be better for us, I think, to do it in groups of five or ten that's guided with. Just.
No kids.
See and, and exit.
They wanna see it, take measurements, whatever they wanna do to, to get a good.
So we'll.
What they wanna do with the building.
We'll try to have some pre-identified and I asked for, so what I've asked for is, uh, Greg and Ames. Put together the, the outline of what does this even look like? We've never done anything like this, what is this?
We did it with this building over here.
Took proposals. And add an out, and a outward RFP.
We didn't advertise it, we just had so many people interested that were like, okay, we have, if you remember Sue. We just, we had so many interested, whoever was interested. We, we went back to the table and went, okay, everybody submit your intentions. That's, that's already, you know, expressed. Yeah, whoever was really, yeah, expressed some interest.
So we're following a little time line like.
Little bit, yeah.
So I asked for that before the end of August, the timeline and what's gonna be required, what's recommended, and then economic development will look at that. And we'll publish it then at that point.
That's great.
And hopefully everybody will have a timeline here. And the construction timeline along. The only concern is making sure that the building get, ideally, the building gets to the finished point. For our perspective and then the. End user is selected kinda, which I think if we can move this, we're gonna be right there on that timeline.
Make the motion approved, resolution one.
Second from Greg, all those in favor of resolution one? Yes, if you'd like to discuss it, yeah.
Earlier, there was some talk that we needed to separate out values for the building and lot, is that not the case?
Absolutely, yeah.
So no, do we have to do that before, is that, should that be a part of this resolution?
Well, I think it was thrown out there, right? Fifty thousand, fifty-five thousand on one and five thousand on another.
And that's what the Katie, the current op- owner threw out. I looked up what it is on Beacon and sent you guys that, the empty lot is valued on Beacon at nineteen thousand, what, whatever it was, three hundred. So I didn't know if you wanna go with that valuation. The only issue it creates is. Taxes that have to be paid by the seller and basically what the city has invested. For future sale, you kind of wanna know what you've got invested to know.
That's why I like, I don't like the five thousand. Right, we aren't giving that lot to the.
Enough value.
Potential person of this, plus we have other vacant lots. If we sell that lot, do paperwork for five thousand dollars. We've just to diminish the value of the other vacant lots. On the ma- on Main Street.
So I would definitely. Which that wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing either though, right?
Right.
That would help us in negotiation on another vacant lot as well.
It would.
Yeah, that's kinda neat, when people are just gonna say you play games.
Yeah.
Which it's the same way the other way.
Yeah, cause they could look at the assessors and go, well, it was valued at nineteen thousand as an empty lot, why, why was it only valued at five thousand on the deed?
Future councils, I don't want them to say, well, we'll get on with it. Pay five thousand. They can just have it.
It's arguably with the building in there, right? Probably motion values on the empty lot.
I would just ask this, I guess, then. If we change the numbers from what's been proposed to this point. Does that change tomorrow?
I don't think, no. As long as I let them know tonight, it's just, it's just the documentation that's gonna end up on the deed.
Yeah.
The whole thing is still a sixty thousand dollar purchase price. It's just. Taxes paid will transfer from one deed to the other deed versus. All on, all on one versus the other.
I don't care whatever you guys want.
Agree with Sean that we should have them both that they're closer to their actual market value.
What, what's the beacon value on three twenty one?
Thirty-nine thousand, I think she says.
Okay, alright. So we're actually at the assessed value.
Pretty close.
Okay.
As long as it doesn't screw up the closing time period.
The attorney didn't think so, no.
Right, I don't, I don't care what we set it up as.
Is that a deal where?
It's actually probably. For her if we do it that way.
It would be, yeah, I think it will be, yeah. Or would it just balance out?
Does the husband own the?
No.
Big enough or is it all in the same property?
No, I think they're in two different setups. One's an LLC and one's a.
Katie owns it private, the empty lot privately. And the LLC owns the building.
Yeah, so she wants the taxes to go to LLC, so.
Yeah.
I'm fine with the assessed value, if someone would like to make a motion to use that.
I know we use it, so, I do focus to assess value.
Are we in a middle of another motion now?
Yes. But does that, does it all go together?
amended to have a value of assessed value.
Let's have a new motion to include both.
So we should. We need to vote now on.
Or just amend the, amend the motion. Or wait to make the motion till you close it.
Whatever we need to amend it if we can, so voting no and then, yeah.
I'd love to amend the, uh, existing motion to, uh, roughly forty thousand, twenty thousand split.
And then does Joel need to agree to the amendment to his motion?
Fine with being the first on that, he's second again. So Joel with the first to amend, so they're closer to a praised value. Something forty to twenty and the approval of sixty thousand dollar purchase for three nineteen Main Street and three twenty-one Main Street. And we have a first from Joel, a second from Craig and. Now we'll go ahead and have a, a vote, all those in favor signify with aye. Opposed, same sign. Anybody abstaining? Nope, okay, carries unanimously. The last one here, um, is the approval of claims, it looks like some basic stuff to do with the market, which is pretty straightforward. One thing, I did get a public comment or question reach out to me. How, how? Do we have like a city point person or is there like? A lead because there was something brought to me about the dueling pianos, they didn't know where to get their check, they didn't know who to reach out to, there wasn't anybody there. Like, do we have kind of a liaison that's been present there or not, or? I know, and I'm not saying I expect you or that to be there, but.
No, one of the vendors had volunteered to kind of take.
Okay.
Lead on that this year, Alex.
So does she get the checks from you or how are checks getting to these people?
She has not, I've been, I've been getting them to them or trying.
Okay.
Obviously, some of these haven't been since they're. So.
Okay. Yeah, I think, um, we survived this year on the, on the market, I think we should overhaul or reconsider the investment of time, location. All those things.
Yeah, we've already been talking.
For previous, for the future, and so I'd like to really put together the people that it makes sense and figure out how to do it. Do it where it's less labor intensive for you and also maybe less frequently for better attendance. The attendance is, couple nights have been good, couple nights have been. And we're really getting only a food truck or two maybe at most, so. I think we need to revamp it a little bit, um. But if you ever need help, uh, with an exchange, uh, I would say you could throw it out to council here. Because I know Craig's been there a few nights, I've been up there a few nights, I don't know that I ran into anybody else. But we, I'd be happy to come pick the check up and give it to them or something along those lines if. You need somebody to be the face of it.
And last Tuesday, I was at a Kelly council meeting, so.
Yeah.
That's a hard, that's.
Just let us know, just, just don't hesitate to reach out, cause I would rather. Sacrifice or one of us do it so that they get paid on time versus them being like.
Frustrated and not.
Yeah, I, I don't want that for sure. It's all in good intent, I understand, and just a factor of balance and everything, but. We can't help you if you don't ask. Any other questions? Everybody's seen the new urban gutter there, uh, out there on Lynn Street by the fire hydrant. But everything else is pretty straightforward, I think. Anybody got a motion to approve the claims, Joel?
I mean, we approve the claims.
A second. Will you sue the second there, sorry Greg? All those in favor of approving the claims, signify with aye. Opposed, same sign. Anybody that abstains, same sign. Perfect. Any final parting words or questions from anybody? There will be a meeting on the second Tuesday, which is this fall, I will be absent. From that meeting, um, but if you have agenda items or things that you want to be on there, let me know, I know Craig sent one in. And we'll make sure that those get on the agenda.
So what dates are you actually gone?
I'm actually gone, July, July, um, fourth through the sixteenth. The fourth, August fourth. I'll be gone August fourth through the sixteenth, okay. Out of the country. You won't be here. Say that again.
You were gonna give us an update that, that August meeting, so badgered you the last meeting. Miss Candor, she mentioned post one that was September.
Don't remind me the scope of it.
Update of where we're at, I, I had mentioned that. You know, there was a five point five million dollar potential price tag and.
Yes, I think Jen can share the breakdown of the phases of what we've proposed in the phases to phase it. Um, I think the staking's gonna occur, I know it's mode or setup ready to be staked. And so I think if you both can somehow together plan to give the sports complex update, I think it would be appreciated.
I just didn't want to suggest that, I think, if you wanted to do it yourself in.
Cause I shared that at parking wreck to the.
Yeah.
Map and then, and the.
There was a lot of questions, I didn't really.
Yeah, I think if we can get the phases out, which honestly, in the packet you got in the mail. There is some information about, there is our grant application in that as well.
Has the basis.
Which has that, but yeah, I think we can provide that.
Yeah, well, I'm just looking for that decision of how, once asked, what? What does our first half million give us? Is it functional?
Yeah, I think, I think we can get to an idea on that.
We validate a lot of money and I don't feel well informed about it.
Yeah, so I think a lot of that's just because, you know, if it's, if it's five hundred grand that we're giving to it. Over three hundred, over three hundred of that was. Free, our time.
Right, that's me, I'm not complaining, I'm just saying that I don't like voting for something that I don't understand.
Fair. So, that would be good, and then the one last thing that I think was asked to be on there is just. Can we, can we open up the conversation around Main Street parking plan? Whether it's to execute something or to have a public. Deliverable in some, that document would be supportive. In the pursuit of the library bond vote, library community center bond vote. So if we had an idea that, hey, this is how we're gonna deal with parking as we grow and as we add that. And we could lay out a little bit of a plan, that could be used in the conversations leading up to the vote in support of. Because that's obviously a large objective to. The location, so some sort of plan.
And just so you guys know, I sent you a ball and email today detailing that, so I always actually had a chance to meet it, but. That's what I'm worried about is, it struck me that we said, based on the west end problems. Let's wait for a comp plan, but it struck me that we're gonna support a bond issue within a. Uh, request for proposal on three twenty one, are we handicapping ourselves by not having at least a plan in place to address? The parking issue, because I, I know, obviously, speaking on fires, yeah. That's one of the most consistent questions I get is. We can't vote for this because we don't have parking for it. I'm worried about the same thing happening for three twenty one if we get a. You know, customer-centric business in there. Are they gonna say, unless you tell us you got something for parking, we're out. And I would hate to lose businesses.
Yeah, and I know, like, talk when we did the Main Street lighting project, you know, a few years ago. Well, it was always in the, the talk of, you know, Mary Beth, yourself, my, Craig Weeks. Was always okay, we took the sidewalks to the alley. On a lot of those roads. The thought was, okay, we would fill those in as angle parking, I guess. Like, like on North and Marshall and, you know, like over here.
Right, that seems.
Cause we put the sidewalk in. We put the sidewalks on North Marshall to the alley. Um, and that was the. The goal was, okay, if you'd ever need parking, you know, some of it's asphalt, some is concrete. It could always be redone or, or put in whatever, you know.
Well, North Marshall in particular seems like a great thing to support three twenty one.
Exactly, yeah, and that's something that I think we would want to have. In the books or, or at least, hey, this is what's gonna happen, so they don't get any ideas. Whoever the buyer is, like. Oh, this is for us, no, that's for anybody, you know, yeah, you know, I, that's, that's the big thing. That's, so you right away, anybody can park there.
Yeah.
You know, I get if you have a personal driveway that's, needs to be designated out, but. Other than that, it's free parking.
I think we can come up with some proposed plans a little bit, and I, I wouldn't be opposed to everybody just coming up with their, you know, hey, this is a thought I have. And combining it and having maybe a work session to really pin something like that out. And have something publicly on that. I don't think it would take a lot of work if we had a map laid in front of us and we just talked about what exits were, and then it could be ran by.
And kind of have it, well, you know, approximately what the footage is ours, you know, so you, you'd have like a decent idea on. Number count, yeah. Yeah, I mean, things on Main Street are extremely wide, but if they go narrow, then. Then you're really narrow, so they're a little wider than they would have to be, but that's.
Yeah, I just thought it'll be a, if we can, if we can put a. Put that on for the discussion when Ken's here as well. I think it'd be good to have, get that discussion because if there is a bond vote November, it'd be nice for them to be able to utilize the city, you know, city's got a parking, a parking.
Parking plan.
Yeah, whether it's enough. You know.
It's us publicly supporting the growth of Main Street, we're trying to achieve it, it's a fair, it's a fair thing, I think, so. Something to chew on and we can, you guys can discuss further on the next council meeting.
Yeah. So, yeah, the city got lucky because Heritage Hall.
Hey brothers, yeah. Yeah, yeah, and really, quite frankly, that parking on the, on, um, First Street there. They have theirs and then it goes to that fourplex and then it, it could really, in theory, keep going to the library. And add several more spots at the library.
Yep.
That are really nice clean parking spots.
So do we wanna have a work session sometime to like really hammer this out?
I think we need, I think we need to probably on this topic, yeah. I mean, I think what I would, what I would prefer to see before the work session is like, hey, Mark, here's, here's Mark's sketch or whatever, is what he's saying. You know, and, and run through that and offer some suggestions. Versus maybe starting with, hey, but I do think late August, September, you know, September, I think.
Maybe I'll try and get something to you and then you guys can take it and run, you know.
Amendment.
Yeah, you can mark it up, do, you know. Whatever.
Yeah. And I think if, if, and if, if, if a couple of you guys wanna, um. Put together. Right around the gator and looking at it and just talking about it with Mark, I think it's more than amendable to all of those. Situations, but I, I think just getting a rough draft from your professional opinion would be the best. And then let's, why are we doing it this way? Why aren't we doing it like this? And then let's just come up with it and then publish it. As. Main Street parking plan, and maybe you can even phase it, you probably can tell us like, hey, this is gonna be way cheaper and way easier to just go out and stripe it. Uh, this is gonna be adding concrete, add asphalt, add this. This is how much we can add tomorrow, this is how much we can add. And, you know, a funder, or a planning phase, saving money for it.
Yeah, the nice thing is you have. Ken's already somewhat, you know, it's. It's, it's hard surface.
Yes.
It just needs markings, maybe.
Yeah, that's easy. You could go, or howls, which you could utilize that right away, I mean.
They would be totally amendable to that, I think, yeah.
It, it would maybe help them.
Yeah. So.
To Chris's point, I think. After we get the, like, the information, we could pull together and make it pretty to use for a sales tool. One we're working for, it's, um.
It's good for all projects and it's a fair request.
Not that Mark wouldn't have a pretty.
Oh, no, I wouldn't.
There was one.
I'm not gonna lie to you.
There was at one point, I think when it was. At one point, you and I, Mark, before we even ended this, talked about. The feasibility and that there was kind of a thought that at some point there would be the wide sidewalk and wafer parking all the way to school. So I mean, I think you start talking about that and that's a huge ride away right in front of my house.
Yeah.
It's, it's over grass, which I'm ready to start treating because it's just so, you know.
Great.
So it's like.
Circle round.
Why don't you put some?
When you go down that way, you run into a lot of. Drainage, drainage issues.
Yeah.
When you get past. Yep, it really. Heightens, I mean, it's gonna add them.
Yeah, yeah, better everything.
Yeah. No, not really at all.
So we just need to regrade it so it's not supposed to school.
Yeah, ideally, yes. Yeah.
Joel's gotta run, I know, and I think we can have some side conversations here as long as we don't have quorum, so. Um, how about a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn?
All second.
All those in favor signify with aye. Opposed, same sign. Opposed, same sign? Nobody's abstaining.
What's Dana do with her lot behind kids?
Didn't know yet, I talked to her about it. Couple weeks ago and she's still.
I'll tell you. Make me an offer is what she's doing with that.
Well, I know that.
Is what she said to me.
That to me.
She gave that to me, make me an offer on it.
I know they, I know they've been discussing it a lot, she. Come in, she's come in a couple different times.
She said, hold on, she said, her husband still doesn't.